I'm going to call the meeting to order, the February 25th meeting of Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee of Cora Madera. Welcome. If you can join me in the salute to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, to the Republic of Spain, one nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to item three, approval of the minutes of the October 15th meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes from our last meeting? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we'll move on to item four, open time for the public regarding non-agenda items. So, let's see. Rebecca, do we have anyone that I'm? Wait.
Warren Wells.
I have Warren Wells, okay. Can we make him live? I don't know if I can do it.
Yep, go ahead, Warren.
Hello, Warren. Hi, committee members. This is Warren Wells. I'm the new Policy and Plan Director for the Marin County Bicycle Coalition, replacing Bjorn Greifenberg. Just dropping in to say hi, wanted to introduce myself to you. I've met Cheryl already and just gonna be working my way around to introduce myself to folks, so don't have anything to contribute today, but just want to say hi and, and thank you for having me.
Great. Thanks for coming, Warren. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will close public comment. And we'll move on to committee member reports, and I'm gonna ask Cheryl Longinati to go first.
Yeah, I ju- I just wanted to note that Cindy Winter passed away last week. You probably know she attended these meetings regularly as well as Transportation Authority of Marin meetings. There's a lot to say about Cindy's contribution locating bike racks and all sorts of things around town. But I think you all, you, any of you who had contact with her know how generous and how thoughtful she was, and I just wanted to note her passing.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And just on two more positive notes. Last week, Senator Mike McGuire had a town hall meeting on the Great Redwood Trail, which is a 320-mile trail from Larkspur along the Smart right-of-way and then up to Humboldt Bay. And it's going to be realized probably in a very piecemeal fashion, but it will have impact, I think, on efforts to get a rail trail in Southern Marin. If, and people if want, they want more information, they can email me. And then also, the Transportation Authority of Marin and Sonoma County Transportation Authority have a contract now for bike share. Primarily the bike share to be coordinated with Smart to let people have a mode to get home for that last mile or first mile. And there are soliciting ideas for where the bike share stations should be set up, so there, if you go to the TAM website, projects and programs dropdown menu and then select bike share, you'll, there'll be a place to for a survey, and it's really easy to, to, it's not a long survey, you just put a dot on a map, so encourage people to do that.
Thank you, Cheryl. Yes, we will all miss Cindy. I think she attended about every single one of our B-PAC meetings since we started. She was always there. If you look in the minutes for the last meeting, she's in the minutes, so she will be missed. She was a wonderful person and a real force for bicycle advocacy. And we're gonna adjourn the meeting tonight in her honor, by the way. Are there any other committee member reports?
Bob, I wanted to just read into the record, if it's appropriate, a short statement by Bjorn Greifenberg about Cindy. Such a pleasure to have known and worked along Cindy. She was such a kind, intelligent woman who cared deeply about Marin's future. I will always marvel at and be inspired by her dedication to civic engagement, persistence, pushing our decision-makers to embrace a more sustainable future, and of course, her determination and ability to ride her bike well into her eighties. And a quote here, "The true meaning of a life is to plant trees under whose shade you do not expect to sit." I also attended the Zoom Town Hall meeting by Mike McGuire, Senator Mike McGuire, on the 15th. And anyone who would like to watch it, it is recorded, it is available on YouTube, and all you need to do is to Google Great Redwood Trail to learn more about it, more about the ambitious project, and that's all I need to add on that.
Okay. Thank you, David. Are there any other committee member reports? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to item number six, meeting to 2021 meeting date. We talked about this at the last meeting, and there's not a report on this. I guess we're just gonna try to make it official. If everybody's okay with this, we're gonna move to the fourth Thursday of every other month instead of the third Thursday. So that's, we're on the fourth Thursday right now, I believe, so we're gonna start doing that, and if no one else has a serious issue with that, that's what we'd like to do, if that's okay. Sounds like it is. Okay. Great, then we will move on to item seven, discussion items. Looks like Jared's getting this all teed up. El Camino Traffic Calming is the first one.
Great, yeah. Thank you, Chair of OZIO. So I'll start off by giving a little context here, and we also have Precy Transportation assist with this presentation. So we were contacted a couple times over the last year or two about concerns over vehicle speeds in El Camino, and coincidentally, we also have a planned pavement resurfacing project for summer 2022. And so the timing set up well, where we could kind of start looking at some of these ideas as part of that larger project. Jared, do you mind maximizing the screen and all, actually? And then while I'm talking, David, if you can queue up some of the visuals. So we met, I met with CMPD and the neighborhood and Councilmember Casissa, as well as some other folks, just to kind of discuss the issues. We did a traffic speed survey with CMPD and found that the 85th percentile was 23 and 24 miles an hour in, you know, respective directions, which is a legal speed, but obviously when you're there, foot on the ground, and it's whizzing by you, you know, there's a discomfort level. So given we have this project that is soon to be in design, that was kind of in our workload plan anyway, we thought it was a chance to look at traffic calming concepts. And that was something that came out of the October meeting, and I then initiated some concept designs with Precy, and we met more recently, early February, again with the neighborhood to kind of discuss those initial alternatives, and so that's available on a recording, YouTube recording online, if you want the detailed discussion, but we thought we'd touch on it here tonight and kind of give you status update and get your thoughts. So with that, I'm gonna kick it over to David and allow him to share a screen and start talking about some of these concepts. And Dave, if you don't have it really available, I can-
I'm ready. It's just I gotta, someone has to allow me to, to use the screen.
Let's do that.
Okay. Great. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, super great. So as RJ mentioned, we were asked to take a look at El Camino Drive. So El Camino Drive is east of One Owand, south of Paradise. And the first thing we did was just understand the existing infrastructure by measuring the street between its curbs, looking at the traffic controls and, and the signs and whatnot. We have that on a couple engineering sheets, and what you see are a bunch of annotations about dimensions and street addresses and, and signs, but real quick, you know, here's Paradise Drive, signalized intersection. The street doesn't have many land uses for the first short block coming up to Estrada Lane. And at Estrada, it's an interesting intersection, it's a three-legged intersection with every approach about 120 degrees from the other approach. It's very unique with a stop sign here. Yield control on a stop Estrada, and no control at all in this direction on northbound El Camino. So there's been some issues and concerns about traffic and confusion and speeds through this intersection. As you head down south on El Camino a little bit more, the street straightens out, and this is where we believe people are picking up speed. The curbs are rolled, rolled curbs, and it's about 34 feet in between the curbs. Cars do park on the sidewalk because of those rolled curbs, and some of the, the traffic speeds that are out there, as RJ mentioned, the 85th percentile speed. Speeds are 23, 24 miles an hour, which are quote-unquote acceptable, but you know what? On narrow streets and where there's kids, and, and then once in a while, that, that car that's going a lot faster, those draw the concern of the neighbors. There's also, yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna point out the, just the daycare is here, this is a, right, school district property. So there are, you know, quite a number of children in the area, and then yeah, we, we definitely, just so we're clear, we're not encouraging parking on the sidewalk despite the old curves, but from time to time, and there were some, you know, higher speeds noticed in the speed surveys as well, so.
Yeah. That's right. Then there's that 90-degree curve by the preschool, and then the study limits end at Granada where there's always stop-controlled intersection. So now only do we look at the infrastructure in this, on this street, but also, you know, came up with some ideas for means to control traffic a little bit better and slow it down and control the right-of-way, who is right-of-way at intersections, so. And it, for sure, we believe some of the faded red curb paint should be refreshed. That the center line between Paradise and Estrada should also be refreshed. I'm gonna come back in a moment and talk about a couple of the options that we've we've looked at and engaged the community or the neighbors in at this three-legged intersection. Headed south from here, though, based on the width of the street, we believe, and we have support from the neighbors that we've talked to, that the best option on the straight segment would be to add some edge lines to the street by eight feet from that rolled curb. Nice, because it'll define that parking area, encourage people to not park on the sidewalk. But also, since there is no, there's no other markings out there, it will define a two-way travelway for the roadway of about 18 feet, which is plenty wide for two cars to pass each other, but also will help with the kind of a roadway narrowing illusion or effect has been proven to help reduce speeds, so that would be a real nice attribute, in my opinion, to do something like that, especially particularly on the straightaway on El Camino. Around the curve, we also observed, you know, some faded curb paint that could be extended on the inside of the curve. Actually, working with the community, they have some ideas about, well, since there's not parking allowed there, why don't we narrow up the lanes around the curve as well, because there were some complaints of high speeds, so we're gonna take a look, look at that. So we think these, these measures will be effective in reducing speeds. We did spend quite a bit of time with the committee looking at that three-legged intersection. We presented two options. We call these Option A and Option B. Option A would extend the curbs into the street a little bit, the curb bulbouts, shortening the crosswalks at the same time, improving the high-visibility crosswalk across Estrada, and introducing a new crosswalk across El Camino Drive. We showed this on the north side, and I'll get back to that in a moment. The curb ramps out here are not compliant with ADA, so, you know, as part of a project such as this, they would be upgraded. The intersection, like I said before, currently has a stop sign here at the southbound approach of El Camino. Yield control here on Estrada, and no control here northbound, so it is quite, quite unique. It does not, some of the committee members would love to see an always-stop control here, this intersection. It does not meet the state's warrants for that, based on traffic volumes and delays and other criteria. But we do think converting the intersection to more traditional with a stop sign on Estrada and slowing speeds on the curve throughout Camino with some of the techniques that we're showing here would be very useful. I will say that working with the community, folks, also, we, we're showing an edge line here to reduce speeds coming through. Many of the neighbors thought the crosswalk actually might be better on the south side rather than the, the north side, so we're gonna take a look at that as well. And we think this one crosswalk makes sense, but we want to understand sightlines a little bit further and the speeds through the intersection. The other option that we considered, Option B, instead of narrowing the street in, we kind of push it out by providing median islands on El Camino Drive, and those would be at least six feet wide. The crosswalk on either one side or the other would be longer than it would be under Option A, but there could be a halfway stop point or refuge area under this scheme. Unfortunately, this would not allow this crosswalk on Estrada to be pushed a little bit further to the east like it would be on Option A. So there are some pros and cons with these options as well. We are showing some red curb pay for daylighting, better sightlines through the intersection, and we'd be able to maintain all the driveway movements in and out of this area. And RJ, maybe chime in here. My recollection is the community, I think there was a little bit more preference for Option A than, than B, and also considering moving the crosswalk to the south side based on some of the travel patterns in, in that area. So that's where we're at.
There, there is definitely an inclination to look at moving the crosswalk to the south side. That was part of our kind of revision that we said we'd go back to the community most likely early May, mid-May. I kind of thought it was pretty split, and, and maybe some thought the raised median island, actually. You know, there's warrants to both, or there's, there's merits to both, so I think it was kind of as we move the crosswalk to the south, we'll revisit the two and, and give it some more thought.
Yeah, I think you're right. On the, on the face of what folks look like, maybe a little bit more to A, but then when, when we go back and revisit it and understand how these would look with the crosswalk relocated, folks may, may change their mind. We also offered that, you know, whatever goes in over time could be monitored, and we designed it so that if a rectangular rapid flashing beacon was ever warranted for the crosswalk across El Camino, it could be installed. But those aren't automatic. We'd want to understand and monitor the condition over time.
Right, and on the, on the discussion of monitoring, right, so the flashing beacons would not be appropriate for what's stop signs, so it would be kind of an issue, and then, based on the standard, the stop sign doesn't warrant, based on today's standards, but if conditions, behavior are witnessed in the future that suggests otherwise, then we would revisit that as well.
Yeah, we'd make sure the geometry would work for, for that potential condition in the future. All right, I will, I can bring that, I can bring these back up if there's any, any specific questions, any of those locations, or?
Okay, so it's back to the B-PAC, then RJ?
Yes, please.
Okay, so first off, from the committee members, are there any questions for staff or David about this? Just questions, please. Okay, hearing none, then we will open this up for public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this topic? And I'm looking, I don't think I see anyone. So with that, we will bring it back to the B-PAC for any comments for staff or David on this project. Is there anybody who has comments on this?
Yeah, I would, I would say something real quick, Bob.
Sure, go ahead, Tom.
I was involved with the initial meeting, and so this is the second time I've seen this. I own a house at 29 El Camino, right in the middle of the drag strip there. So it was, it was a very interesting meeting. I was part of the community there and did rep, did say I'm on the B-PAC. But I think that was a very fair way to put it there, David. And I think I was actually the one that suggested maybe that that crosswalk should be on the south side of that intersection, because you do have a better view of people coming down El Camino on the south side of the intersection versus the north side of the intersection. But I'm glad everyone's looking at it, and I'm sure the right decisions will be made.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anyone else?
Bob, yeah.
Tony.
This is probably a little nitpicky, but I know I've seen this issue come up with some plan reviewers and other jurisdictions, the the, the curb ramps and their alignment to the crosswalk. Typically, you know, we like to have them all in perfect alignment, so there's no maneuvering when you're leaving the, when you're leaving the curb or the, the corner, you know, turning 90 degrees to get in the crosswalk. Has that been talked about or, or brought up?
Now, let me all address that one. So you know, the, the current best practice is to have directional curb ramps, so every corner does have two. Although there are some engineering conflicts that you'll get into with grading and all that, and then also I also really try to emphasize that more so on our higher-volume stretches and collector roads. Not that we wouldn't try to make it happen here, but I think there's more of a, a push to do that on those, on those higher-volume stretches and, and less on residential. It's just kind of my, my take on it, so.
And to add to that, it's very difficult unless you're doing a curb bulb, when you have just a four or five-foot sidewalk to create directional curb ramps. So on that Option A that we showed where there was a big curb bulb, there'd be opportunity to do it. But where we don't provide it, it's very difficult, and many of Cora Madera's residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, most of our standard curb ADI for residential, to David's point, you would probably end up with one, and then that's fairly consistent throughout the town and the county, so.
All right.
But we'll, we always try and look at it, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else have committee members? Yeah, Cheryl?
Sure. Um. It, it looks like the modifications in the drag strip stretch are pretty minimal. Maybe that's the wrong word to use, but, but there isn't, the treatments are at the corners, it, it seems. So I'm wondering if if there're if there're maybe chicane's or other things that could be done to sort of even give the more of an illusion, besides the striping that you mentioned, to get more of an illusion of narrowing the street. I've seen that. I mean, this is a residential street, and I've, I've seen that done in Berkeley, where they've actually put the curb out in the middle of the block and planted a tree or planted some vegetation there.
If I may touch on that. So one of the things that the neighbors have said is working is at one point in time, because of shelter in place, there are a lot of cars parked, which caused the vehicles to slow. You'll go, if you, I drove down there today, because my son goes to daycare down there, there's probably four at least of those kind of neon little guys out in the kind of shoulder, and that's having a nice calming effect. And then also, there was also a couple construction projects that had a similar effect, and so that concept is, has shown to be working on this stretch, and that's similar to what we're trying to do here with the edge line. But to your point, we're also gonna look at kind of some curb extensions to kind of prevent what I'm calling the, the cheaters, those that are gonna veer off the edge line and kind of feel like they have more space and kind of stick their foot to the, the pedal. So that'll be part of our revision on the next round to consider some of that stuff. And the downside of, if, we also considered a chicane in the middle, but that would reduce parking quite considerably, and there has been some thoughts that at times it already does get pretty maxed out and people to park down at the school, so.
Okay.
Anything else, David, I missed there?
Uh, no, I think, I think you got that right. I, I'm pretty confident, though, that the striping at 18 feet, Cheryl would be, would be effective by at least a few miles an hour on the average. But again, keep in mind, I think, based on my experience in the county, that folks get really annoyed with the folks who are going very fast. So we really want to address address those people, right, who are going over 30, and, you know, with, with things through the curves, through the intersection. And yes, the short, short straightaway, too.
There, there is a new, I don't know who put it up there, but on the telephone pole right next to our house, there's a flashing sign that was upgraded, I don't know, maybe six months ago. It would, did the town put that up, or was that a neighbor that put it up? I, I really don't know, RJ.
It's, so it's, it's CMPD, and given, given the comments, they're kind of with unannounced, showing it up from time to time, just to kind of get some neutral feedback. So I, I didn't, I wasn't aware that they did it more recently until I saw it, but yeah, it's, it's back up again recently, so.
Yeah, I think it's helpful.
Just a quick question again. If, David, if I assume the design speed is staying the same, basically, or, or are you actually trying to get a design speed down to, say, 20 miles an hour, so that, and if, if that could be accomplished, then presumably the average, the 85 percentile would be eight, would be 25 miles per hour. Is that my correct in that?
Well, the design speed on a straightaway is infinity. So what we're doing is, you know, through narrowing the street, you know, we're trying to give that illusion, we know it's, that'll bring average speeds down by about at least three miles an hour. And through the curves, by narrowing up the lanes, we tighten up the ADI, as well as through the Estrada intersection, you know, I can't tell you exactly what our design speed is gonna be. We're still working on that, Cheryl, but you know, we're looking at those curves and, and trying to definitely slow down, slow down people, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from the B-PAC? Okay.
Thank you for looking at it.
Yes, thanks for being here. No vote is necessary. We will move on to item B. Paradise Drive Sidewalk Widening, San Clemente to Seawolf Road Diet Analysis and Narrow Section. Staff, RJ?
Jared, you wanna?
Jared.
Take us off here, please?
Yes, yes, thank you, Chair of OZIO. So here on the screen in front of you is an aerial view of this section of Paradise Drive that, that we're talking about with this project, the sidewalk widening project that is. The project extents are from the San Clemente Paradise Drive intersection on the left of the screen down to the Seawolf Paradise Drive intersection on the right side of the screen. And, and it's kind of demarcated in that hatched yellow region, so it's on the north side of Paradise Drive. Really, it's the westbound Paradise Drive side of the road. And essentially, this was, this was a, an image here that some of you may have seen back in 2014 when it was first put together. Really came about as part of the Safe Routes program, but it's a heavily-used sidewalk for children, you know, coming to and from school in the area. And currently, it's, it's a four-foot-wide sidewalk, and that's shown in the, the upper images here. Right, the, the, the middle image shows the sidewalk width, the shoulder, and then the, the travel lanes. And the other image, you know, four to five feet sidewalk and shoulder, and then the travel lane. Down at the bottom, it shows one condition where there is, the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk is separated by a landscape strip. But, but then again, out into the road, so. Yeah, the, the project in general is, is taking that existing four- or five-foot-wide sidewalk and, and widening it to an eight-foot-wide sidewalk. So basically, a little history, I, I briefly mentioned it, it's Safe Routes to Schools, kind of committee-initiated project for, for the kids walking and biking to schools. It's Safe Routes to Schools kind of committee-initiated uh project uh for the, for the kids walking and biking to schools. Uh, this has been presented a few times, I think five, we noted um along the way to B-PAC um over the last few years and um also to council uh back in twenty-seventeen when, when a grant was accepted uh for about six hundred thousand dollars to help fund this project. Um, it's, it's worth noting that the twenty-sixteen Cordera Bike and Ped Plan uh called for the need for a class one path here. Uh, but really, the the right-of-way constraints didn't allow for a full uh formal class one. So um, the 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 eight-foot side, eight-foot wide widened sidewalk is is the, is the um, the happy median there. Uh, some, some product details uh touched on a couple of these. But basically, outside of the roadway, the the exit, the exist thing sidewalk will be eight feet wide, uh widened to eight feet. Uh, new curb ramps along the stretch, uh, there's two intersections that will be getting new eighty-eight curb ramps. Um, and then also, the grade, the elevation of the sidewalk is gonna be adjusted, it's gonna be lifted up. And that really is gonna help some steep cross slopes that are out there right now on Paradise Drive. Um, and also to assist with drainage improvements. Um, and I did mention, you can see in the bottom uh cross-section here, there's a uh, there's a travel lane, or there's two travel lanes, one nearest the sidewalk and then one up against the median. Um, you will notice that the widened sidewalk uh does encroach on what used to be uh the the shoulder here of the road. So um, now, now the new sidewalk will be eight feet off, basically off the right-of-way. And then that still allows for ten and a half foot wide travel lanes before coming to the the existing median. And in some places, we're actually modifying the existing median to fit this cross-section um in here. Um, and then of note, there's gonna be a conform paving uh exercise right here uh where the new sidewalk interfaces with the existing roadway, so that'll have a little bit of new pavement. Um, but this project is is really um right in front of a more formal paving project that will be repaving Paradise Drive formally out in front, um both lanes um on both sides of the road from San Clemente to Seawolf. So still covering the same extents of this project. Um, and then as far as the road diet analysis um is concerned, uh, what basically, we we asked uh Pariisi uh Transportation to assist with is uh discussing what would it look like if, if we took this two-lane in each direction Paradise Drive corridor and and squeezed it down to one lane in each direction, or at least in the westbound direction? And and how would that affect uh traffic queuing and 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 motorists passing through here versus how it currently flows now? Um, so I have a lot of analysis here, uh, but I think David Pariisi, since he's on the call, uh, put together all of this himself.
And then I'm gonna toss it to David. I just wanted to clarify, there was a note on one of the earlier slides that said part of twenty-twenty-two paving project. And that was just a uh notation error that we had on there. Um, so this is scheduled for um when school is out this summer. So this June, hopefully, and then um we have a separate project that will marry up with this one and hopefully be right behind it to do uh paving on both sides of the street, again, from San Clemente down to Seawolf um there in front of the Nugget Market. And um, and and, you know, this comment about the road diet was brought up a couple of times, once um perhaps at the last meeting by uh Bjorn and and then um, we got an email recently as well echoing that same sentiment. So um luckily, we, we had um kind of already initiated some analysis on um by Pariisi to consider that. And then here he is to um give us his um results.
Thanks, RJ and Jared. Um, actually, the road dot, I remember coming up twenty years ago about the idea, uh, because there's this such limited right-of-way here and there's no like perfect solution. So um, we know the average daily traffic volumes, uh, you know, are are typically could be accommodated with the road diet. But the issue here on on Paradise are all these traffic lights. And that this traffic signals themselves are what are controlled, is controlling the capacity of the street. Uh, could you think about it, a traffic signal um reduces the capacity by about forty percent. So that's why we typically need additional lanes coming through these traffic signals. So we took a look, uh, looking at some pre-COVID traffic volumes for AM and PM weekday peak hours uh to understand the uh level of service and delays um overall, reached the three intersection show here on these dots as well as the um eastbound and westbound, except that uh where San Clemente comes in, we looked at southbound uh there. Uh, we compared uh conditions today versus if we were to take away a a westbound lane. I'll be honest, I was kind of surprised that during the PM theoretically, things worked okay. It's during the morning time that we would see um a lot of congestion. And um, let me see, I think I can, I can't quite annotate, but on table, I'll just draw your attention. For instance, the table two uh Paradise and Madera Del Presidio Drive and and Harbor Drive. Uh, during the morning time, the intersection operates at what's called level service B and all motorists on average only experience about eleven seconds of delay. Uh, but if we were to reduce the number of lanes, um, the delay would really shoot up to about fifty seconds uh and to level service D. And we don't think that'd be tolerable, uh, because backups would would extend all the way uh down to Seawolf Passage. There would be um just a lot of queuing on on the street. Also, uh, table three, which is showing uh Paradise at El Camino and Seawolf Passage, uh, that intersection in the morning would also, uh, if the lanes were reduced, uh, be compromised quite a bit. Uh, with average um eastbound and westbound delays of eleven and twelve seconds increase into over a minute uh in the eastbound direction and half a minute in the westbound direction. So um, yeah, it's it's the traffic signals uh that are really controlling uh this corridor, they're needed. Uh, and and um, you know, road diet would definitely have some, some substantial traffic impacts.
Alright, thank you, David. Um, so just touching on a little bit more of of this project, um, here, we have some images from
Jump in, so um, we, we had one item here to originally talk about um a narrow section where we were still kind of working through some design challenges involving some fronting properties. But we actually had a very uh productive conversation today and um we feel we came to a a nice resolution with the fronting property owners and I think um, help bringing them along on the the kind of benefits of our preferred design. So um, it, it's very similar to the rest of it and I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it um this evening. So um, I'd like to um, I think, kick it back to um the committee for any suggestions on the project in general and and anything on the road diet.
Okay, um, so let's first start with any questions from B-PAC members?
Um, is, mind if I go?
Kirby, yeah, go ahead.
At, at some point, are we gonna see um more detailed drawings before this proceeds?
Um, we're about ready to bid these. Um, so I guess we can show the screen before. Is there any area in particular you're interested in? Um, it's fairly consistent. We're again, um, you know, we're losing that shoulder and that is being dedi- rededicated to an eight-foot sidewalk. And that's fairly consistent, um, other than, you know, some little grading related to these driveways. And um, we're also trying to um improve the cross slope. Um, if you drive through there, you know, you feel it in the road. It's, you know, in excess of five percent a lot of places, and so we're trying to lift the the flow line to improve that. But other than that, I I feel like the design is fairly um consistent throughout that stretch.
Um, I'm more interested in the stretch of um roadway as it, as it connects with uh San Clemente. And and also, given, I'm, I I also live in this neigh- in this neighborhood along with Tom. There's an area I I run quite frequently and may have some specific thoughts about specific things. And I'm, I'm, I still will remember making three comments about your previous thing and suggesting the rope path be straight and then finding out the path wasn't straight. So um, this is a, this is an area where I would be interested in seeing more detailed drawings.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we're always open to um share those. I I don't think it'll be in in part of a future B-PAC just given the time and bidding, but happy to share those with you and and get any additional comments on those. We typically try, for for a June start, we're gonna try to bid these um starting um probably end of March or or very beginning of April.
Yeah, it's, it's the area as um between Madera Del Presidio and San Clemente. It's, you know, it seems like it's kind of tight and um up, that's probably one of the tightest areas. And I'm curious how that, that path um is constructed.
Okay, absolutely, yeah.
And if I can just follow up with that, so, or I mean, in effect, this sidewalk is gonna become a two-way bike path, right? I mean, that's, that's how it's used now, except it's only four feet wide, but it's gonna be eight feet wide, so hopefully it'll be safer. But it's a two-way bike path, right?
Yeah, correct.
Because this gets super heavy school traffic in the morning, as Kirby well knows.
Yeah, and it can be used for um adults as well and not just children. And then the other piece that um, uh, we, we still need to do a little analysis on, but um, we're considering uh sharos in that um number one lane and and happy to get anyone's feedback here on on whether that'd be appropriate, given the reduction in the shoulder.
Yeah, I mean, I, I live in this neighborhood too, and I mean, at a minimum, that would have to happen for that right-hand lane i- in my opinion, and I sh- I sure would like to see it go on a road diet from San Clemente the whole way through to, you know, where it turns into a, you know, one traffic lane each direction. Um, there's a lot of, lot of road bikers. Yeah, okay, sorry.
Sorry, we're just doing questions right now. We haven't heard from the public yet. Sorry. I gotta stick to the brown egg here. Okay, any other questions from uh B-PAC members?
Is that, is the town comfortable that no homeowners uh yards encroach into any property that can be used for this pro- project?
So other than this one little sliver that we're showing up here, which we've vetted with the um property owner, the rest of the path and road is um within town right away. Um, there, there could be some temporary grading, but um, once the project's done and complete, um, the path will be within right away.
I guess I would have a question, Bob, if I could ask.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Have, have you guys looked into um timing of the lights versus the way they are right now? Like making the three lights that we're hearing are the bottleneck, any, has any research been done on whether those three lights could be timed versus tripped the way they are right now?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that. Yeah, we considered that in our analysis as if they were optimized as best as possible. And um, the results are, would still be the same. That's what we, that's what we assumed uh, which would be a really highly optimized east-west uh traffic progression. The problem is, again, there, there's three lights, they're very closely spaced, there's lots of cross-street traffic. Um, you know, I know that a couple of years ago, um, the road diet was considered and and another idea would be to put, put in modern roundabouts, uh, because those could just have single lanes uh going through those. That would literally add millions and millions of dollars to this project. And I do believe um, there was some right-of-way impacts as well, and that was done, there was a study done like three years ago. So to make a road diet work and retain access all these intersections, you would have to do that. You'd have to spend just a gob, gob load of money and develop, and you know, have some single lane roundabouts.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from B-PAC members for staff on this? Okay, I don't see any, so I guess we will see if the public has any comments on this. If you want to speak, you can, you get three minutes. And RJ, can you? I don't know if I have.
One second here, we have, um, so it's Gene Severn House, uh firsthand, I see. Go ahead, Gene.
Good evening, everybody. Um, this is a great project, really excited to see it moving forward. And I wanted to um just say, it's really great that the city, that Cordera, the town has done the traffic studies, thanks to Pariisi because it's certainly a question that we've come back to a bunch. And I was wondering, um, David, if you could say, like, in terms of roundabouts, clearly, it's not part of this project. But how much timing, how much does do roundabouts get rid of the timing issues that we're seeing here on this street? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And David, we'll just answer all the questions after all the public comment, that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Is there another hand up?
Now, David Bell, go ahead, David.
Sure, thanks. Um.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, David Bell.
Oh, sorry.
I was on mute when I said that, apologies.
Yes, hello. Um, so regarding the short stretch on Paradise from Harbor to where San Clemente and Paradise intersect, yes, it's a very tight sidewalk. I will, like others, like Kirby, I'm in the neighborhood. Every school child, every, every kid riding their bike to school and back uh will avoid that tight sidewalk. They'll go, if they're going to school in the morning from east to west down Paradise, they'll turn on Harbor, left on Echo, go down Echo. And there's this short gravel pathway at the end of Echo that connects with the pathway. So it, that stretch still needs to be improved for the weekend cyclists that don't know about this little trick. But I'm imploring the B-PAC to address the short gravel pathway from the end of Echo to the pathway, because that's what every kid is using when they're going to school and on the way back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it looks like maybe Janet Furman?
Yes, Janet.
I might be able to do that, yeah.
Janet, go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Um, I was wondering that since um the shoulder of the road would have to be eliminated in order to make room for the widened sidewalk, whether it would be a good idea to have a railing at the edge of the sidewalk to just give a little more separation between automobile traffic and bikes and pedestrians.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak? I don't see any other hands up, so I'm gonna turn it back to RJ, Jared and David to answer questions and about what we just heard. Thank you.
David, why don't you, it sounded like you're ready to respond to a couple of those and all.
Yeah, yeah, I I can, uh, in reverse order. So the shoulder that's out there today is 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 a three-foot shoulder. Um, if you observe cyclists, including many of you I've seen out there and myself, some people don't even use a shoulder, it's so narrow, it's on, it's ambiguous. Uh, and folks use that outside part of the lane, so we're in favor of, you know, do with some sharos. Um, we think that will, that will help. That segment between Harbor and San Clemente, that will, as sidewalk area, will be at least eight feet wide. There's a little bit of extra room because there's a retaining wall on the north side of three residences uh that we're gonna try to take advantage of some of that space uh as well. And we're also looking at smoothing out a driveway transition for cyclists, like road cyclists that may be on the street itself transitioning into the San Clemente path, uh making that a little bit uh cleaner of the transition. And then last but not least, Gene, you asked about the roundabouts. My recollection is that uh at least one of the, one if not two uh roundabouts, if they were installed at these three intersections would require acquisition of public uh right-of-way um to make them fit even with with single lanes. And uh, for the most part, they definitely would reduce east-west delay compared to the uh traffic signals. Um, and would allow the roadway to have just one lane in each direction. Do think there was one intersection, I don't have the study on me right now, that still would have some substantial delays during one of the peak periods. I just don't recall which one that is. But, you know, I'm a big proponent of modern roundabouts when they make sense. I think the issue here was the cost and the fact that they would require some substantial right of way.
David, and then I think I'll touch on the other two that I shot it down. So there was a comment about the Echo, calling it the Echo connector path, and we we have that listed in our later discussion about kind of CIP projects and and items we've heard over the years, kind of on the, in the queue and trying to get a little feedback about priorities. So David, we hope you can stick around for that and and kind of engage in that process that we'll have later in the meeting. And then secondly, I think there was a comment about, was it handrails on the sidewalk, I think is what I heard, and kind of the issue there is typically you would have to put that generally about eighteen inches away from the face of curb. So right off the bat, you're losing at least eighteen inches and then those that use them on bikes also are going to want that safe clear distance from the handle, from their handlebars. So you end up effectively losing a lot of width that you're now creating and so and we would kind of use it in its kind of current condition and plus the widened width is as currently planned is is the the idea.
Okay, thank you. So then now we are back to the B pack for comments on this. Are there any B pack members who wish to comment on this? And I'm having a hard time seeing everybody. So if you want to speak, please let me know.
Bob, Kirby would like to speak.
Go right ahead.
Um, just reiterating what someone else said, yeah, the the Echo shortcut or path, I literally ran it this morning, that's how I run it, because running along that stretch of Paradise between Harbor and San Clemente is just a little too tight. So improving the Echo gravel path. I'm glad to see it's on the the plans, but I again would like to reiterate wanting to see more detailed around, yes, I know it's eight feet wide and we should all be happy it's eight feet wide, but the detail between Harbor and San Clemente and how that transitions, because it does go into a path, and that is probably the the tight spot that a lot of people think about on the path.
Thank you, Kirby. I know you know a lot about that area. Any other committee members who want to comment on this? Yes, Cheryl.
Well, actually, it's more of a question, but RJ mentioned reducing, I think, the median at some point. And I'm wondering, is it a cost factor that that wasn't considered along the length there, because that would be some space that could be utilized for the sidewalk?
Yes, so there was a definitely a cost element. You know, we do have a grant for six hundred thousand dollars and the project is, I believe, current estimate is closer to a million or just a hair over, so it is not fully funded as originally programmed, I think back in two thousand and fourteen. I think there was a thought that it could be funded at that amount, but separately, because you have the turn pockets, unless you remove those, it's you 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 run into only, you can only reduce the median so much without reduce deleting those turn pockets. And I don't know, David, do you want to?
Yeah, there's two, a couple of other factors too. If you look at this plan here on the upper upper left, you can see there's some places where we're definitely going to have to shave the median back a little bit, Cheryl. As RJ mentioned, there's turn pockets in and out on the street. And then also, the road is at different elevations, eastbound and westbound from that median. So theoretically, even if we took out the median, there'd be a huge hump across the street. So it's it's the median is actually kind of hiding that in many places. So there's some, just some old grading issues of how this road was built. But we're doing our best with what we got.
Great, I've got a comment. I think it's great. I think it's great if there there can be an upgrade on the Echo bike path little connector, because that would take some pressure off some of the stuff that we're talking about today. And I guess I would still like to advocate for, you know, one one lane of of car traffic each way, considering Paradise Drive is one lane, and there's only this little three light section. If that could, if that could be one, one lane of traffic, I'm guessing that when this is backing up, and I've lived in this neighborhood for ten years, so and I I ride my bike almost every day and I drive my car almost every day through through this area. And it it seems like if there is a problem with of a backup at any of those three lights that are on the schedule in table one or two or three, there definitely would, the larger problem would be down by Redwood Drive and San Clemente. So I think that's where, that's where the real backups happen. You know, and and anyway, in my opinion, if there's a backup in either table one, table two, or table three lights, it could be one lane each direction like Paradise Drive is to the whichever, to the east. Because the larger backup is always going to be out on San Clemente where there are two really good lanes. Thank you for the lines, very, very helpful. I just think in this smaller section here of these three lights, I I love the eight foot wide sidewalk. I think a lot of pedestrians and younger kids will be able to take advantage of that. And it will help tremendously. I was on safe routes to schools in this area for for five years too, for the Cove School. And I just I there's there, in my opinion, there's no reason to have two lanes of traffic in each direction except on San Clemente. The rest of this could be one, there's nice turn lanes. There's so many cyclists going through here. I mean, you can, there's many cyclists in a day going around Paradise Drive as there are cars. Anyway, I just think the larger backup of these three lights is always going to be at Redwood Drive in San Clemente. So I'd like to see the diet.
David, do you have a sense of Redwood and San Clemente? Have we looked at that in the past? Then, yeah.
Into the north? Yeah. I don't actually don't have a sense of that too much.
And then, sorry, Bobby, you were gonna.
In my, in my opinion, that's where the larger backups will be regardless of what happens. Wait, when when the school kids are coming or going, you know, it that's that's the main traffic. So and and the larger backups are almost always and and would be even if it was one lane, because effectively, it's kind of one lane anyway at those three lights. There's, it's rarely, there's rarely two lanes of cars ever at any of those lights. If it was one lane, they would just be anyway, I I think the road diet and proper bike lanes, along with the eight foot sidewalk on the on the north side is brilliant.
I will add one thing, RJ, and that is that, you know, we're pretty confident with our results, because the existing match what we've observed, what we modeled matches what we observed pre-COVID. And because there's not a whole lot of congestion today, you know, folks can use whatever lane they want. If it was down the one lane in one direction or or both directions, you know, there can be all the traffic through traffic will be forced to use that single lane in each direction. Again, we assume the same traffic volumes that have been been counted and, you know, traffic, unfortunately, it's, you know, delays increase exponentially when you have capacity constraints. And that's certainly what we'd see at, you know, the Madera del Presidio, Harbor Drive and El Camino, see what passage intersections. San Clemente wouldn't be, you know, you can see here, it would go from A to C in the morning. And I should also state that we were just looking, we did a, this is a very focused analysis on AM and PM. We didn't look at the after school traffic, which can also be pretty substantial. But we just, we just wanted to focus it just on weekday AM and PM at this stage.
In in my opinion, the the traffic at the end of the day with the schools is always the worst.
Okay, Tom, I I understand your point, but I think your your point is that you prefer the diet, but I think we're looking at data here that shows if you do that, we're going to substantially increase the the times. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
And and that's fine. I just want to bring up the fact that I think the larger problem, if those are going to have problems, there's going to be a larger, there's also going to be a problem at the other light. So anyway, I'm that's, I've said my piece.
Okay, thank you. Kirby, would you?
Yeah, I just, I hate to say anything slightly disagreeing with what the other guy from East Corte Madera just said. So sorry, Tom. I just want to.
No, that's okay. Hey, I'm just opinion. I don't care.
We're on the east side, look out.
We got to stay united. There's only a few of us here. But I do recall, and I'm pretty sure I'm remembering this correctly, when we talked about this road years ago on B pack, somebody from the audience said something startling to me, which was, don't you dare think about taking this down to one lane in each direction, or we will, our neighborhood will come out in force and just like it was, I was startled because I I've always thought, wow, that's a great solution. And the 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 strong the strong statement kind of stuck with me. And that which makes me wonder, was this ever one lane before? And then they, you know, so they suffered the pains of that and then lived through and seeing it go to two lanes. I don't know. That's my comment.
Kirby, I thought it was you that said that.
But it may have been. He lives over there and he has to go through the intersection every morning, so.
Petitions going around.
If I could add a little kind of feedback, I mean, as someone who frankly gets hundreds of complaints about delays due to construction and all those things, I get complaints all the time that people say it was a five or it was a ten minute delay and I go out and experience it and it's a minute or it's a minute and a half. So I I really do encourage you, next time you come to a street light, time yourself and you're going to end up seeing that it's, you know, off in twenty seconds.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I've driven here for ten years. I've only, I've only ever had problems at the Redwood and San Clemente light. None of these, my humble opinion, I don't see these being a problem if it was one lane, because anyway.
And and so there's the time factor.
I'll take some more polls around the neighborhood and.
There's also the optics, because I think to get to these numbers of fifty and seventy seven seconds, it's just going to be a row of cars all the way down the stretch. So every time school comes out, it's just going to be bumper to bumper the whole way. And I I know my phone's going to be on the hook, so if this were a serious thing that we had to consider, it would be a a community discussion, I think. Go ahead.
Yeah, Kirby. Kirby, you're on mute.
Ah, okay, so apologize if I missed it earlier. But I assume that the the right of the two lanes, the right lane is going to have sharos, because I assume on the weekends, without having a bike lane, the bicyclists are just going to take the right lane and all the cars are going to single file on the left wing. Is that, is there going to be sharos?
Correct, we're looking at sharos in the right lane.
Yeah, at a minimum, there would have to be, because there's no road biker that's going to go on that eight foot sidewalk. I mean, I I won't even ride that on my mountain bike. I'll be riding in that lane like I get, like I do going down through Corte Madera, downtown Corte Madera, you know. I ride through there literally every day, both ways.
Okay, are there any further comments from B pack members? I can't.
I've got a comment.
Go ahead, Dave. I can't see everybody, so let me know. Thanks.
Okay. So I appreciate that this project is going to go forward without metal stanchions and cables that would act as a catch wall or handrail, as RJ has referenced it and Janet Furman was asking about. But I know, of course, on the Golden Gate Bridge, that was an addition to prevent vehicles from entering into the sidewalk. And of course, there is a similar catch wall on the pathway that currently narrowly goes over Corte Madera Creek. I just want Public Works in the town to consider what would happen if a distracted high speed driver going north came over that curb, once it's an eight foot wide sidewalk at the exact wrong time with a bunch of Cove School kids traveling. So at some point, if there is a design that will not unnecessarily interfere with the kids' handlebars, but would act as a catch wall, cable catch wall, if you will, to prevent a distracted driver from going up on the sidewalk. I'd love to see something like that be considered in the future.
Okay, David, thank you. Any other comments from B pack members? Okay, hearing none. I'll just add in, thank you for doing this. I have been here about this for years. And this is not perfect by any means, but it is also a massive improvement over what is there, and it's going to dramatically increase the safety in that area. And I think it's really good that we're finally getting close to moving forward on this. So thank you for all the work on this. This is, this is not easy, as we've all just talked about. So thank you, appreciate it. Let's move on to Tamil Pius in Eastman. This is my neighborhood now, Kirby.
Great. Jared, are you, do you want to kick us off here?
Sure. Yep. All right. So the Tamil Pius and Eastman intersection, existing conditions and request for lead ped interval. So staff has just recently received some input about this intersection and wanted to bring this up and have a discussion about this here. So I think a prudent thing to do first off is to talk, what is a lead pedestrian interval? And just kind of discuss some of the the high level concepts of what this, what this really is. So here, I'll read it off the screen. LPI is a countermeasure used to give the pedestrian a head start to cross parallel to the green light before a motorist proceeds through the intersection. So it's really to enhance visibility of that pedestrian as they're making their way across across a road. I kind of show it right there pretty crudely with a diagram. You see a car specifically at this Eastman Tamil Pius intersection, say, is leading the Corte Madera Community Center and making a left going on to eastbound Tamil Pius, a ped that wants to cross the road under the existing conditions will do a ped call to cross and they will get the the walk symbol at the same time that car gets the green light to proceed in its movement. So there's, there's, there's no delay, so to speak. The the ped goes and the car goes. So a lead ped interval really is something that that is timed into the whole phasing protocol for that intersection, and it gives that pedestrian three to five seconds of a head start before that car is given the green ball or the green light to proceed. So that's real basic of the concept. They can be applied at many different, multiple different intersections. It is a little bit of a study to to get that included. So basically, to review the existing conditions, it's a little bit of a process that we would have to engage basically a traffic engineer to analyze the the warrants at the at the intersection, take a look at the traffic signal timing and and make modifications to all the different phases as a result. And and we do want to highlight that doing this can cause vehicle delays. Basically, if there's a a heavy vehicle movement and we have to get the peds in a head start across the road, it could cause in some conditions that the vehicle delays to account for that. it could cause in some conditions that the vehicle delays to account for that. And as far as the, the technicality behind it, there's, there's hardware modifications that need to be made for the traffic signal cabinet. Reprogramming the, the signal timing and rough costs are anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000 per intersection and it could take. Yep. I'm sorry. I thought I heard my name. So yeah, it could take maybe six to eight weeks or something like, like that to, to, to get, you know, contracts and reviews and coordination implemented in, in something like, like this. So it's a real brief, RJ, you got any?
Step back to the last slide and I'll just, we have given it some initial analysis and, you know, I think this particular intersection, there is a lot of support for it. You know, obviously we would want to cross our Ts and dot our Is, but I, but I think the preliminary conclusion is that it would, it would be a good candidate for this. And I think, you know, given the close calls and there have actually been a couple collisions reported in, in recent years involving pedestrians. So I, I would, you know, support it and think that it, it does deserve this treatment, you know, in the, in the very near future. And as a separate discussion, and we can have this, I think, later as part of the kind of capital improvement program, you know, do we consider this at other intersections? And that might be a more medium or, or longer range analysis, given other priorities. But I think this one, you know, at the initial study level makes a lot of, makes a lot of sense. So.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, RJ or Jared?
No, David, did you want to add to that? We had David Priest stay on just for this item and perhaps?
Now, you guys covered it really well. Just, you know, these leading pedestrian intervals can work really well. Again, you want a pet push button, right? So they're not happening all the time. And the traffic numbers need to be, need to be right. So you're not causing additional congestion, but you know, for left and right hooks, like you have had some near misses and maybe some actual collisions here, I think it'd be a good idea for this intersection and then case by case, looking at the others. Unfortunately, it's more expensive than, than you think. I mean, the five day is, is real because a lot of our signal controllers do not have the capacity or capability to do this and they need some componentry added to them. And, and often you do have to retime quarters traffic signal system just for coordination so that there's a little bit more complexity involved, but I think they're great tools.
Hey, thank you. David, thank you, RJ, Jared. First off, any questions from BPAC members about this item? Any questions? Yes, Cheryl.
Good question. So the warrants are actually traffic analysis, some statistics that you have, you have to meet a certain threshold in order to for state law to allow you to actually implement this or, or can the town just do it? I understand you want to do a traffic analysis, but is there a requirement? I know for stop signs there is. Is there a requirement to meet some kind of threshold here?
I'll answer that. There's not a specific formal warrant for these, Cheryl. But we do want to do an analysis, understand what it does for signal timing. And if typically, you know, if we have a side street that you need more time for the pedestrians than you do for the cars, that's good. But if we have a side street that has high vehicular demand turning left or right, you know, we could, we may have to add green time to that whole side street, right? And that means we got to take it away from the main street. And that's when we need to understand what the impacts would be. So it's looking at that fine balance. But generally, I'm, I'm in favor. I love LPIs. It's just when you have higher congestion levels, you could run into some issues.
Thank you, David. Any other questions from BPAC members? Okay, hearing none, we will move it to the public for public comment. Looks like Warren Wells would like to talk. Warren, I think you're unmuted.
Thank you, Chair Vazio. I'm not sure, was there a, a moment for public comment after the last item? I think that might have been missed.
Oh. I don't know if I did that. Sorry.
Yeah, I think it just went from, that's okay. Is, is that, will it be okay if I can give a comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, it's all right. I just wanted to say that, you know, I have nothing but respect for David Priest and I really, you know, totally understand who the analysis his, his firm has conducted with this. But I just wanted to kind of point out, you know, in my prior work before coming to MCBC, I worked for a, a planning consulting firm and just, I want to urge caution with traffic modeling. Modeling is an art, not a science. And something that it doesn't capture is it assumes that, that all traffic demand is exogenous, like it's just going to happen no matter what and doesn't really factor in behavioral change. You know, we talk about oh, all these people are taking their kids to school. So there's going to be a whole lot of demand on here. Well, people are driving their kids to school because they don't feel safe with their kids biking to school. So I just want to urge the committee members to, obviously like traffic modeling is very important. It should not be ignored, but to understand that it is a tool and not a crystal ball of what will pass should a decision be made. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, back to this item. It looks like we have Wayne Sakamoto. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Wayne, if you'd like to talk.
Yes, hi. My wife and I, we live here in Chapman Park and we have a business at Park Madara Center and we we use that crosswalk most days and we definitely have had more than a few near misses. And we posted this problem on Nextdoor also and quite a few, quite a few people weighed in and they said they've had the same problem. And we personally know one neighbor that was hit there and then another neighbor weighed in and said she was hit and a lot of our, I think four, also four other neighbors said that they had near misses as well. So definitely an LPI would, would be helpful. I mean, if we can just get out into the crosswalk before the traffic starts heading towards us and be I think definitely beneficial to pedestrians. I mean, the, the, the drivers are extremely apologetic when they are coming towards us and, you know, we I mean, they feel just as bad. So if, yeah, if there was a head start for us, maybe they wouldn't get into the same situation where they feel bad about getting close to us. So that's how that's what we would like to weigh in it or.
Okay, Wayne, thank you very much. Uh, let's see, it looks like is it Patricia Keats?
Yes, it is. Hi, I'm the wife of the man who got hit in June of 2017. The guy said he never saw us, but it's a bad corner. We've seen people get hit. We've seen people almost get hit. The other thing I'd like to add is that a lot of kids from school cross there and there's a crossing guard, but they don't always cross when there's a crossing guard. And also the, um, the rec center is there, the, the area where people go and play baseball, everything, the restaurants there, a lot of people use that intersection. And we've seen people get hit. My husband got hit three weeks in the ICU, three weeks in rehab, really bad. So I, I really think this is warranted. And I, and I know Wayne and Cookie, they see it every day, Wayne Sakamoto and his wife. So I would really like to see this go into effect. It would, it would, I think, help the whole neighborhood. I think it's really warranted. People come out of that parking lot and they're just hell bent on getting on the Tamil Pius and getting on the freeway and half the time they're just not even looking at the people. So I, I think it's really needed. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And Jean. Jean's Heaven House, is your hand still up or?
Hi, yes. I think an LPI here would be super helpful. I too have had at least two very uncomfortable narrow misses in that crosswalk and Santa Fel put three second LPIs through the downtown and, and most drivers don't even know it's happened, but the pedestrians are out there in the intersection before the drivers go. I think, I believe an LPI is anywhere from three to five, maybe sometimes seven seconds. This is a four lane road, so maybe it has to be longer, but I'm not sure why you would hesitate to put it here or why you would need a traffic study because though it, my understanding of LPIs is that it's only, is the maximum of a seven second delay. So if you could answer that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think that is it.
Bob, we have also some emailed public comment.
Okay, go ahead, Jared.
I wondered if it's now, now's a good time to read?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, quite a few, so I'll try to go quick over them. I support and request the addition of a lead pedestrian interval. The signal timing technique of a lead pedestrian interval LPI allows pedestrians exclusive access to a crosswalk typically typically three to seven seconds before vehicular traffic is permitted. LPI benefits include increased visibility and greater likelihood of vehicles yielding to give pedestrians a head start in crossing Eastman Avenue Tamil Pius Drive intersection to increase pedestrian safety in our community. I have found this crossing to be unsafe. Tom and Jerry Carter. And then to the town of Corne Madara, I support and request the addition of a leading pedestrian interval. The signal timing technique of a leading pedestrian interval LPI allows pedestrians exclude it's the same exact quote, so I won't, I won't get redundant, but it, that's from Aldi Miles.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have another one. Mr. Sakamoto, who already spoke, so I'll forego reading this one. I would like to add that I personally have had near misses of being hit at this crosswalk intersection as well. I support the addition of a leading pedestrian interval. The signal timing technique of a leading pedestrian interval allows pedestrians exclusive. And that goes on to say the same quoted excerpt, and that's from Kathleen Snyder.
Okay.
And Judy Schwer, to whom it may concern, we live in Eastman since 1998 and experienced firsthand how dangerous the crosswalk is for pedestrians. I even had a car bump my stroller with toddler son in it. People are always in a hurry to turn in both directions. I agree with Cookie and Wayne and other neighbors that the light should be altered to allow it need time for pedestrians. And while this is a different but related issue, I believe the crossing guard should help people in the crosswalk on Kathy Verdi's side as she does for the other side, giving people exiting the rec center parking lot to turn left frequently. Do not wait for peds or kids on bikes. We've had too many close calls over the years. Many thanks, and please let me know if we can help in any way. Regards, Judy Schwer. Couple more. The, the, I support and request the addition of a lead pedestrian interval, all the signal timing technique of a lead pedestrian interval allows pedestrians, paragraph, thank you for addressing this. I have too many, experienced some close calls while walking my dog on leash. I appreciate this post, Christine Robbins. Gentlemen and ladies, I was one of the many pedestrians hit by a car turning left in front of me at this intersection when I had the right of way. Therefore, I cannot stress how strongly I feel about this issue. I had a fracture in my knee and was bedridden for three months. Please accept my comments below. And then it's the quoted statement that I been reading. Thank you, and I hope you consider all of those, especially children who may be injured in the future. Respectfully calling idle. And then another one of just the quoted paragraph that, that I previously read. Thank you for making our community safe for pedestrians and children. Julia Maurey Prange. I have seen some close calls at, at this intersection over the years, walking my kids to and from school. A leading pedestrian interval would be a helpful addition to make crossing much safer. Dana Fleming. One from Pat and Terry Keats, but I think we just heard from Pat Keats.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we are back to the BPAC for comments on this.
So Bob, if I can speak up on it for a moment.
Sure, go ahead, Dave.
Typically, when I leave the town park, parking lot next to the community center, I turn right to go to my home. But since Cookie and Wayne brought this to my attention, I think I've tried about a dozen times to simply make the left-hand turn to determine, you know, what my experience is. And even in my relatively small vehicle, which is not an SUV, there's no question but that the natural driver experience is to look west uptown Pius Drive to make sure that there's no traffic coming downtown Pius Drive. It's not going to stop. And then to make your left-hand turn and the driver's side A pillar that supports the windshield and roof just blocks any ability to see pedestrians in that crosswalk for the critical seconds. So it, it sort of goes without saying, there have been so many near misses and actual collisions, serious collisions, that I think that at a minimum, the LPI should be undertaken. And I would encourage the town to proceed with even, you know, the most nominal traffic study. And the reason I say nominal is I think the sooner we do this, the better. But also the traffic that would be directly impacted is primarily traffic leaving a parking lot. It's not traffic that's coming from a side street. And so it occurs to me that, you know, the, the, the less we spend on traffic studies and the more we spend on simply the hardware and software to be able to get this LP up, LPI up and running is good for the town and good for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirby.
I, I'm in support of this. Look, I don't think I have to live in West Corne Madara to know that this is a major intersection. And, and, and a key one connecting people, you know, the residents on one side getting to the park and everything else on the other side. So it's just a no brainer to me.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I'd say this is a no brainer to me too. I, a few, three to seven seconds delay to get the pedestrians across safely is I, I support it.
And I go through this intersection almost every time I leave my house. So I think it makes a lot of sense. Does anyone have anything else to add?
I just want to say I, I agree as well. I mean, there's just this huge level of security when you push that button and you see the pedestrian sign to walk, but you just, you're not always thinking of waiting and still looking everywhere. So I think it's a no brainer as well.
Okay. I think we have, oh, go ahead.
Just dink it.
You just want to jump on the train? Okay. Anyone else?
Let's see.
Okay.
Gentlemen, I think Everyone for the public comment. I thought that was very valuable. You know, the true experiences and, and, you know, folks that have lived there for many years. And so I, loud and clear, heard from the committee, heard it from residents and we'll, we'll put a priority on this.
Thank you and thank you, RJ and staff for responding so quickly to this. We just started getting this about a week ago and here we are a week later with a solution. So thank you. Appreciate it. Item in, item D, sidewalk shaving and sidewalk program.
Great. So we recently in October initiated our sidewalk pilot program. You all have been very instrumental in getting this off the ground and we have our newest member of our team, our student or formerly student graduated intern. we have our newest member of our team, our student or formerly student graduated intern. Dimitri, he's going to give us a little preview of the webpage and kind of talk about, you know, some of the progress today. We've already made some some nice improvements. So Dimitri, are you?
Yeah, I'm here. Hello.
Get up. Okay, great. Yeah, let's go ahead and give us a little rundown. Thank you.
All right. Hello, BPAC. Thank you for having me tonight. Just starting by going over the actual sidewalk pilot program webpage as RJ mentioned. So you can navigate there. Do you want me to open it up, RJ? The actual webpage or?
I'm controlling it.
Yeah, if you could.
Yeah, I can pull it up. Let me see if I can grab it.
Sorry about that, Jared.
That's okay.
So we'll go to the webpage in a second, but we have been messaging messaging this on Nextdoor. It's been, I believe, included in the newsletter at least once. So any time we get a notice or a complaint and we send a notice for repair, we also include a link to the webpage and the grant program. So we're really trying to broadcast the you know, the grant support that the town councils approved to really just incentivize people to really jump on these deficiencies. And so here's a little look at the webpage and Dimitri, if you're ready, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, I'm ready. Thank you. So we just want to give you a brief overview. So it has the background information as to why the program came about. And it goes over in depth each strategy. So there's four of them. You have all the qualification or eligibility requirements. And permit fees and everything discussed there. It goes over how much grant funding is available for each strategy and even talks about the cost matching for those strategies that included. And then if you navigate to the actual top left of the webpage, you'll see in the top left there should be an application. So there's the sidewalk replacement grant application. And this relates directly to the strategy to strategy number three of the sidewalk program. So this allows homeowners or property owners to initiate a sidewalk repair and receive grant funding from the town outside of the other projects or the other strategies that can initiate this at any time, as long as the funding is still available for that year. It's about $25,000 each year for this particular strategy. And the process
I thought it was fifty. I think it's fifty.
I think it's fifty, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's fifty. I apologize. It's 50,000 each year. So as long as that's available, we have this application up, you know, for property owners to apply. And the process is very straightforward. They submit this application with two quotes from licensed contractors. And then once they submit that to us, we contact contact them to schedule a field visit with town staff. During the field visit, we go over the quotes. We discuss, you know, whether or not they they meet the town minimum requirements, which are very basic and the expectations of the homeowner. And then after that, after that meeting, we review the application. And if it is approved, they go through the process encroachment permit inspections. And upon the final inspection, they submit their paid invoice and they get reimbursed. So that's just a, you know, a quick overview of the webpage.
Yeah, if I may, let me jump in, Dimitri. So I mean, we're trying to create one form and try to streamline the process. I know it sounded like a lot of steps, but you know, some of those are just kind of your typical encroachment permit processes you would have to do regardless. And those fees are waived as part of this program. So there's a lot of benefits to the program and Dimitri's been doing a great job. You know, working with homeowners and we've already had a lot of applicants. Him and other staff were able to get this up and running as we kind of closed out the end of the calendar year, which took a lot of time, but we're happy with where it's at and always open to any suggestions or improvements. And then with that, we also initiated a as part of one of the separate strategies, there was a about $50,000, I believe, set aside for sidewalk grinding. And Dimitri can talk about some work that was recently done as part of our fiscal year 20 slash 21. Go ahead, Dimitri.
Yes, thank you, RJ. So earlier this month, actually, we had a project in Chapman Park among other streets. And this is kind of the background information that we use when approaching this, the strategy number one. And it basically goes over, we had two sets of sidewalk inspections that were authorized by town and one was in 2013 and that was a part of the barrier removal implementation plan. And you can see right there, some of the numbers that they gave us for locations that need to be grinded, 10,563 offset sidewalk panels, 356 locations where the sidewalk need to be removed or replaced. And that amounted to about 550,000 in sidewalk branding and 800,000 in replacements. And that is in this diagram, it's all the red markers there. That's for the first inspection. And then the blue markers were conducted in the second inspection. So the second inspection was conducted by precision concrete cutting in 2019. And this is the one that guided us in this recent project that RJ was talking about, the sidewalk shaving. And they
To the next page, let me just clarify a couple things. So yeah, there was the barrier removal and implementation plan done in 2013. We actually had precision concrete cutting do an inspection based on roads that were prioritized in that document. And so they do list two costs, one for shaving and one for replacements. And at this time, we are kind of focusing on the shaving element for this particular strategy, but also looking at the removal replace as we look at these other strategies, whether it be the ones that are initiated by individual property owners or including our capital improvement program.
Thanks, RJ. And yeah, so we we have the second inspection and that led us to selecting we thought was appropriate in Chapman Park. And as you can see, there's some additional streets that we were able to include in that Chapman Park region. And we also selected Tamil Tamil Vista Boulevard, as well as Council Crest and Montecito Drive. So they completed this already earlier this month. Once to those locations performed the sidewalk shaving. And for this project, we notified homeowners prior to the sidewalk shaving. And in addition to notifying them, we included an opt out form. So ideally, if the homeowner did not want to participate in the sidewalk shaving, they don't want us to touch their sidewalk, then they could submit that opt out form to us within 15 days of receiving it. And then we'll exclude them from this project.
Yeah, and part of the reason we selected these was, you know, mainly, as you all know, there was a lot of recent complete streets work, you know, whether it be sewer rehab, followed by paving, all of these things. And this was kind of what we saw as kind of the last piece in the puzzle to really complete these areas and kind of feel good walking away. So we wanted to go back and and finish the job that just was so close, but not finally there.
Yeah. And then next you should see on the next slide, we're going to look at the actual repairs that are done. So on the top right, you can see a diagram, and this is kind of, you know, what they proposed as before and after. So you can see the lip and then after, you know, it's all ADA compliant flush looks clean. And on the bottom, these four photos here, these are actually around town. So you can see the work is, you know, very similar to what they presented to us before. And a total of 550 556 sidewalk shaving repairs were completed and it costed around $37,000. And that was done, as I said, in the first phase, first couple of weeks of February this year. So there's no outstanding complaints. The work, like I said, you can see it, you know, it's the same quality that we expected. So judging off of that, we're pretty confident we say that this was a success in this first phase. And we still have some remaining funds there because we went in, you know, thinking that it was going to be 50,000. And I think RJ is going to touch on those additional funds.
Yeah, and Jared, if you could jump back to the the slideshow and the two inspections that were done. So doing some quick math. You know, that averages out about $67 per tripping hazard. So I think that's a to get anything done like that this day and age for $67, I think is is pretty good value. And then given, you know, so we have a surplus for our fiscal year, our current fiscal year for grind downs. And our thought is to kind of continue to kind of pick away at these known areas of deficiencies that were off this priority list. So you know, perhaps we start with some of the more higher volume streets like Tampa Pius and others. But kind of each year, as we have surplus, we kind of keep picking away because again, this one has a $550,000 estimate for grinding and shaving. So it's going to take us some time, but that's that's kind of where we're thinking as we move forward. Next slide, Jared, down to the zones, please. So one of the other strategies was kind of this, what we call zone approach. So we did an attempt at, you know, as best we could, kind of grouping neighborhoods and trying to make the sidewalk within each zone kind of equal. And so we've created this map. We're happy to distribute it, get anyone's comments, but that's our best attempt at trying to get an even amount of sidewalk in zone. And we wanted to get any advice or thoughts or any suggestions, whether, you know, we missed something. And then kind of after that period, kind of move forward and use it. One of the criteria for kind of establishing priority within zones is kind of this language here that priority would be given to neighborhoods or zones that have volunteers as well as a list of preliminary list of interested parties. So we have heard from one zone in particular, there's some folks in Mariner Cove who have identified two volunteers and have started notifying some of the residents to see who might be interested. And it sounds like that list may be coming. So at the moment, it seems as though they have the kind of inside track for the first year of this part of the program, which would start in fiscal year 21 slash 22 22. And so that's kind of just an update on where we stand on that one. But once we do select the zone, the town to get more involved in in kind of our end of of notifications and really work closely with those volunteers in the neighborhoods to get a more complete list and start, you know, putting together whatever plans and bidding and kind of getting that bid package and economy scale to get ready to implement. Next slide, please. And with that, that's a quick update. Any any questions on
Okay.
progress.
RJ, thank you. I just I'm gonna I just got one quick question. So as I recall, the way this works is we try to do one neighborhood a year. Is that the
So we wanted to process the neighborhoods together. And then we separately tried to divide the town itself into 10 groups. So
10 groups.
Sometimes you get two neighborhoods in one zone.
But you do one group a year, basically.
That's correct.
And that's the $50,000 gets spent by that group, right?
Dimitri, do you have? I think that's that strategy is, I believe, it's 100 or
Was it 100? Okay.
Yeah.
It's two. The other piece about the program, and I should know this. We have 250 a year dedicated to all of the strategies. And one of the pieces in there is there is flexibility. Should one strategy not be fully utilized, we can kind of use that to support other strategies that are underfunded. And so as we kind of move through this pilot phase, and again, we're in the first year, we can kind of adjust those dollar amounts to the best benefit for the town.
Okay. And tonight you're looking from us from what are you looking for?
Just an update and then a sense of if people want to critique the zone map before we start kind of using it or also just any feedback from the public who may have experienced the recent work in Chapman Park or perhaps recently experienced the individual process to get reimbursement. Just an update and some initial feedback or anything you have.
Okay, well, then first, let's start with questions from BPAC members. Or is anybody with a question here? Okay, I don't hear anyone with questions about this. We'll open it up to the public. Looks like Wayne Sakamoto has his hand up. Is that? No. Okay. I guess not that I don't see any public comment, Jared. If RJ, if you do. If not, we'll come back to the BPAC for comments and feedback on this. Anybody here?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to welcome Dimitri. I wasn't at the last BPAC meeting, so maybe he was introduced then. But if he wasn't, either way, this is my I wasn't your last time. So welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I'll add to that.
So we were lucky enough, Dimitri graduated from UC San Diego and applied for intern position and he probably shouldn't be saying this in front of me. He's more than overqualified. So we're very lucky and and he's doing a great job. So, you know, great job, Dimitri. And yeah, he'll he'll hopefully be taking the lead, a bigger role. And he's already taken a big role in this program, but even more so moving forward.
Thank you for doing that, Kirby. Any other comments from members of the BPAC?
I just want to applaud this effort. It's been kind of years in the making and it's it's really important, I think. I expect in a couple of decades, I'll have my little motorized chair and I'll be able to tell. No, I am serious. I hope I think there are people who use motorized chairs, but they don't go out of their homes. And this will enable them to do that. And I also like the website that it's kind of in a FAQ for, you know, frequently asked questions format. So it's really easy to find information. Well done.
Any other comments?
So I just want to say, I've said this before, but I'm so grateful for the way that the town reaches out to the community. When I first moved here, it was pre internet, pre town website, pre Nextdoor. And to know whatever was happening in town, you had to walk to town hall and look at a sheet of paper with the agenda for what was going to be on the next town hall meeting. So the community outreach, and this is a great example. Almost everyone that I've talked to in town already has some sense that this is a town program that they can take advantage of, even though maybe it hasn't moved to their neighborhood and they're able to educate themselves using the the town website or asking for updates. So I just want to again applaud each incremental effort that the town has made to keep the citizens informed. And finally, just say that also the community electronic reader board has been utilized more often for these kinds of messages. And I encourage Public Works to use that for projects like this when it's appropriate, in addition to all the other electronic and mail outreach. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other further comments for staff on this? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to the next item, which is the DPW Capital Improvement Program for an update and a discussion about priorities.
Great. So we we thought it'd be a good time of the year to kind of talk about what we have on our plate and what we kind of see is either it's been vetted by council already, or we we see it as private. Oh, sorry, I saw some waving waved hands, but I thought it was on you. Or what we see as priorities from a department level and just thought it'd be a good opportunity to discuss those and get any feedback. So it's a pretty full plate. You'll see here on the left, we've kind of for this meeting organized them by kind of their various groupings, multimodal kind of road maintenance, storm system, parks, rec facilities and SD2. So our engineering team is is pretty lean and mean, including Dimitri. It's six of us. So it's quite the load and you know, frankly speaking, last year, we we really took on probably more than we should. And it was a pretty challenging year, but staff really did an amazing job. And and I probably didn't do as good of a job, kind of kind of setting some realistic workload expectations. So I'm trying to do that better this year. And to that note, on the right hand side, so we had a similar list that you see on the left of your screen and on the right hand side. In addition to what we had planned and planned to do, we ended up accomplishing another 26 or so items that were kind of on the fly that weren't necessarily in our workload to start the year. So kind of hoping that we can get a sense of a little bit about priorities and we'll get to that in a later slide, but also But also, yeah, also want to pat all these guys on the, you know, on the back for all the hard work they did up till now. And just trying to communicate and also kind of set some more realistic, realistic expectations moving forward. Before we go there, or actually, we'll come back. And so, yeah, go ahead, Jared. So in addition to those kind of big ticket projects that you saw on that list, each of our staff members has their own work plan. And so we have, for example, Jared's. And so you'll notice that a lot of those projects listed there aren't here. And he has many more assignments that he's working on well beyond where on that list. So it's, it's just a, it's a busy, it's a, you know, it's a busy function that we, we serve. You know, there's a lot of requirements at the regulatory areas, there's projects, there's supporting various groups and looking at a different assignment. So just wanted to communicate and share that with you all. Next slide. So here are some of the ones that we've heard over the years that are not at the moment on that list. Or I guess the ones that are dark, that are in black print are on that list as of now. But we've heard tons of great ideas. And the idea here isn't to discourage the public or the committee from bringing those ideas forward. You know, I think that's one of the best parts about what I've seen thus far in my time here is so many great ideas. But we just have to, as a, as a team and as a group and as a community, just kind of prioritize, you know, when does one rise to the top? And, and for those that aren't there yet and they're in the queue, just kind of, kind of know that we will get to them, but it might take another year or two or so. And so with that, we did want to have a little dialogue about, you know, some of these ones shown in gray, perhaps where they might stand in your guys' minds. And at the moment, they're shown kind of in sequence as we recall receiving the comments. But again, it's not a ranking from top to bottom in any, in any sense. And is that the last slide on this topic, Jared? Yeah, so I think this is where we'll stop. And again, we're happy to revisit the other project lists as needed. But I think we wanted to, you know, again, we're, we're, we've been running full steam. We're actually probably a couple of months, two to three months behind where we'd like to be at this time of the year. And so, you know, trying to look for any, any feedback you guys might have, you know, priority wise.
So RJ, just to be clear, you want feedback from the BPAC on this list of projects that's on the screen right now? And what priority we would place on them?
You know, actually, yes. Why don't we start on the, you know, now I think, let's start on the first list in, Jared, the one, yeah. Is there anything here that maybe isn't a priority would be one question? And then separately, you know, if we did have and find additional bandwidth as the year goes on, what would be the next, you know, one, two or three items that you guys would recommend grabbing?
Okay, so maybe just from a procedural standpoint, we should just handle any questions from BPAC members first and then we'll open it up to the public and then we'll come back to the BPAC after we've heard public comment. If there is any for priorities, does that make sense for everybody? Okay, so first off, any questions from BPAC members?
Yeah, I have, I have one, Bob. Under multiple projects, Central Marin Regional Pathways going under design. I'm not sure what that refers to, Central Marin. Just what pass that would be.
So it was a rehabilitation to the Warnham path that goes between Tamil Vista and Redwood Highway. It was a new cycle track or a class four that would go along Mellon. And then it's an improved pedestrian crossing that crosses Pfeiffer. Some slightly in the vicinity of the current crossing over by the SF Fitness and the Joann's, but slightly more mid-block and it would be staggered. So there's a safety improvement there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from BPAC members? No, okay. Then let's open it up to the public to see if the public has any comments on this. I do not see any. Okay, so we're going to close public comment. And we're going to come back to the BPAC now for comments on this rather extensive project list. Do you want this slide up, RJ, or the other one, or?
You know, we can toggle between the two depending on the comments from the committee. But yeah, if you've taken a good look at this, I guess we can shift to the other one. And, you know, again, with the surplus time, you know, where would you all like us to kind of initiate some efforts? And again, you know, a lot of these, some are small, some are big, some are lower cost and some are greater cost. So, you know, we can't, you know, we don't have necessarily, depending on the project and the authority, to just go out and deliver it based on the feedback, but we might be able to do some initial analysis and kind of, you know, go to the next step where some are simpler and we might be able to complete them. So.
Hey, RJ, I'm just going to add a quick comment. The, the ones that are shown black really are currently kind of more or less tied to a capital project. And that's, you know, generally this list, it's, you know, part of the Capital Improvement Program or the CIP. The ones that are in gray, not to say they're lesser of importance, they were just not part of the original Capital Improvement Program list. So I just wanted to kind of make that comment.
So are those the ones where we need to talk about prioritization then? Is that?
Yeah, so and one, one asked with the asterisk, we did have actually Hart Street on the work plan. And one thing we'd like to bounce to is if we can push that one fiscal year to kind of create a little more buffer for potentially some other items here, if we can get the capacity to grab them.
I just got a question, then is, refresh my memory, the Hart Street connector is?
Yeah, it's, I think it's Palm Avenue. It's, it goes up to.
It's a, yeah, the one, right, yeah, okay. Okay.
What, what? Good question.
Yeah.
What are the tainter steps?
That's Chapman area, historical steps. We have done an initial historical study. And so, you know, moving into the next step, I think we'd have to potentially get a design consultant to start looking at what it might take to go through the remainder of that process to improve those. But yeah, it's in the Chapman area.
Okay.
And if I can just add to that, RJ, that is a very complex, expensive, large-scale project, right?
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, it's definitely in excess of, you know, six figures or, yeah, definitely six figures.
High six figures. Okay, so we're trying.
Process.
And we're, yeah, and we're trying to establish priorities within this list.
I just thought I knew all the steps. So in Corne Madara, I got surprised here. I like running stairs.
And, and it, you know, we hear, you know, we've heard a lot of, a lot of these ideas and probably most of them have generated here at BPAC. And I just didn't want anyone to think that we were not moving something forward because, I don't know, we had some, we don't have an agenda. We want to deliver what the community wants first and foremost. But at the same time, we're only human, we have limited bandwidth. And so as much as we'd like to jump on everything and deliver it, we can only do so much.
So Bob and RJ, my only comment is, is that it's incredibly refreshing to have a Public Works Department that organizes and recalls all of the feedback and tries to prioritize each of these projects. And I say that, thinking back several generations of, of Public Works leaders, the BPAC would be constantly bringing back to them projects that we had proposed before and then had sort of fallen by the wayside. So I really appreciate this effort to keep track of what has been suggested and trying to prioritize. And my final comment is simply that, I think nine times out of 10, personally, I would rely upon RJ and Public Works to be able to determine what they can do on the fly if they get a little bit of extra time that's inexpensive. And it really doesn't need a whole lot of additional input from me, given how organized you are.
Thank you, David. Any other comments from BPAC members on this list?
Are we ready to state our priorities or?
Yes, go, yes. Actually, unless, unless you have a question, which I just have one quick question. Chapman Drive bike signage is preferred route. RJ, that is to make that preferred route over Corne Madara grade? Direct people?
There was a, an alternate route suggested to take Upper Chapman and, and look at potentially, I think it was signage or maybe even sharrows to kind of help wayfind people up through Upper Chapman.
Instead of going up?
Instead of taking, yeah, Corne Madara Avenue.
Okay. Just curious what that was. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay. I think all these projects have merit, but you know, we heard tonight about a really dangerous place, Eastman and Tamil Pious. So I would put that really push that to the top. And then the Echo Connector also, we've heard from the public about that a couple of times. And it's also a safety issue. So those are the two top ones I would voice for.
Great, thank you. And Cheryl, I would echo those comments. I think we heard that from the public tonight and I would, I would move those up as well. Any other BPAC members with comments on this prioritization? No, okay. And then RJ, just want to clarify, you're going to move Hart Street. You're saying you want to move that down and out in the next year, right?
Yeah, we had shown it on some prior work plans as either being in RFP now or maybe even last plan. We did get a grant and we were able to confirm with Tam that we aren't up against the deadline. So we'd like to defer that to at least the fiscal year 21 slash 22, 22.
Okay. Great. Are there any other BPAC comments on prioritization? Okay. And hearing that, I think you guys, it sounds like you guys are doing a great job. Everyone's in agreement with you, so keep it up. Thank you. And let's move on to item eight, project updates, slurry seal.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll get through a couple project updates real quick. The slurry seal project, you guys might recall, started last year and in 2020 to do a slurry seal on various roads around town. So the contractor completed the roads shown in red already. And, and they did that and kind of ran up against a little daylight issue coming into the winter months, daylight and temperatures to get the slurry seal to, to set properly. So what they did is they did a little suspension during the winter time, during the rainy season or projected rainy season at least. And, and they're planning to, to come back and complete the rest of the roads. So currently it's on hold, but June, we're, we're looking forward to them returning to town and completing the blue highlighted road segments. One of which is Madeira Boulevard that we have brought to BPAC. I think it was the last meeting when we met in October to discuss significant striping updates and safety improvements along that one. But otherwise residential streets mostly. And yeah, so we're looking forward to, to the slurry seal project coming back. And then also I wanted to draw attention to the little green box there as, as I don't know how, how much publicity this got, but we're planning on also coming into Town Park with this slurry seal treatment and, and doing some paths that are in much-needed surface resurfacing to, to get the, that pavement nice and polished here, right in front of the dog park and then behind the community center.
Yeah, some along High Canal as well.
Yep, and, and that, yeah, so this is just that part. And then some other paths to note, like RJ just mentioned, behind Neil Cummins, the High Canal path here. And then also over here on Paradise Drive, there's the class one path between Prince Royal About and Westward. So not just streets getting slurry, but also some foot and bike paths around, around the town. So that's a quick update on that one. We can take questions now or I can go to the next project too.
Any questions about slurry seals from the BPAC?
Jared, can you address the contractor coming back for Corne Madara Avenue and repairing the damage done by negligent drivers? And also whether the striping is going to be, paint striping is going to be replaced by the thicker style striping?
Yeah, yeah. So basically what happened was there were some issues on Corne Madara Avenue. And I mean, you know, I'm going to actually back out a little bit and I'm going to say there were some issues on multiple streets around town with the slurries deal, the first pass. And, and part of the project is for that contractor to, to assure and guarantee their work. So they will be coming back to repair areas that either have, have worn down, have unraveled a little bit or just weren't simply put down correctly. And, and that will be conducted as part of their return in June. And then as far as the, the paint issue, the, the formal treatment is going to be thermo striping for all of these slurry seal roads. So I believe the thermo striping went down on Corne Madara Avenue already. But if, if, if you've recall some locations where you've witnessed actual paint going down, then, then we'll definitely make sure that they come back and put thermo striping in.
Corne Madara Avenue is paint, not thermal plastic. And I don't know if this is a question or comment, but at least on Corne Madara Avenue, significant damage was done because homeowners were not prevented from driving out when the slurry seal was thick and wet. And I think there just needs to be more manpower by the contractor or yellow tape blocking off driveways or whatever it takes because it was heartbreaking to see all the hard work, hard work go into it and then have knuckleheads drive down the street, you know, through three inches, two and a half inches of slurry seal, just destroying the hard work. So I just impressed upon the contractor to put more time into preventing that from happening during that critical 90 minutes after the slurry seal goes down.
Yeah, just to clarify, yeah, so, yeah, they're definitely not off the hook. We haven't accepted any of those work, the repair. I know there was a driver that drove in the wrong wet side of the lane for a stretch there. We, we do need, we have a CM firm that is, has analyzed that and we haven't closed the book on it. They did put signs, I believe at each driveway saying, wait for the pilot car. And I don't believe that person did and also went in the wrong stretch. So there's, there's error on, you know, I think on the, the driver's side as well. But in any case, we will get it to a final product standard. But yeah, so noted and thanks for the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to the 2021 pavement rehabilitation project.
Excellent, yeah. So this is, this is the project that RJ mentioned briefly at the beginning of tonight's presentation. It does include that little stretch of Paradise Drive, right? Where we're talking about our sidewalk widening. But from high level, this is, this is roads resurfacing project for 2021. And it's going to be taking place this summer. It is going to include ADA curb ramp improvements and drainage improvements as well. And then real, real briefly, what you see on the screen are highlighted. And then real, real briefly, what you see on the screen are highlighted road segments that, that we're going to be addressing as part of this effort. It's, it's kind of following after the, the undergrounding work that happened in most of these locations. MMWD, other, other utility agencies getting in, also SD2 doing the sewer work ahead of time. So we try to get underground. That's the, the standard procedure for the town, get underground and get out and, and then put a nice new asphalt surface on for, for, for many years to not be disturbed. So I could go off all the lists.
Yeah, let me jump in there. So Marina Village was initially included in a permit requirement as part of a sewer project. And just so we all know, there, we do vary our pavement strategies depending on what we see the road condition is. So even though they're all shown in the same red color, some may be getting two inches, some may be getting three and more extensive structural repairs. So there's multiple ways that we try to balance the funds to the, you know, to optimize them from a paving standpoint. And, and I could probably go on for hours about kind of the nuances and waste all everyone's time, but there, there's windows where, you know, there's a window where yeah, there's a two, window where a two inch overlay makes sense. And there's a window where you need to go three inches of fabric. And so anyway, we do vary it because you might say, well, my roads worse than, you know, Meadow Ridge or my roads worse than this or that. And so feel free, call me, email me. I can, we can get to the details at any time.
Perfect. Yeah. So that's pretty much what I had to mention on this one. The whole Mariner Village, Marina Village neighborhood is being addressed as part of this. And then a couple of roads here in the Mariner Cove neighborhood that are, that are pretty bad. But otherwise, this little paradise stretch adjacent to our sidewalk widening, Madeira city up around Meadow Ridge and Ridge Court. Any questions?
Any questions from BPAC on these? Okay, hearing none. Then we will finish up with project updates and we'll move on to item nine, future agenda items. Are there any BPAC members who have suggestions for future agenda items you'd like to make at this time? Yes, go ahead, Kirby.
Yeah, I'm not actually sure if this is in the scope of Cordegaard, but the, the marsh, I call it like the Out by Nordstrom and they just redid a, a hiking path out there has become extremely popular. But it's interesting, there's a loop and they did half of this trail really nicely and the other half after a rain is just mud soaked. And I don't know if it's within the town's jurisdiction or not, but if it was, I'd be interested in talking about that at a future topic.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Future agenda items? No? Okay. Well, then with that, I think we are done and I'm going to adjourn the meeting and I'm going to do it in honor of Cindy Winter. So thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening and thank you Cindy for attending so many meetings and everything you did for us. Thank you. Good night.
Goodbye.